Good evening. Tonight is Monday, July 7th, and welcome to the Lakewood Board of Education meeting. A regular meeting. First, we will have a call to order. Do I need to appoint?
After. We'll do the roll first. Mrs. Katzenberger?
Here.
Mrs. Shaughnessy?
Here.
Mrs. Clark Sutton?
Here.
Mr. Callahan?
Here.
And now, we need, I'd like a motion to appoint a treasurer pro temp for this meeting.
Motion.
Okay, thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Can, Ms. Kundev, can you call the roll?
Ms. Katzenberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Mrs. Clark Sutton?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
So, it has been passed. So, I would invite everybody to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. Next, can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda?
Remove the adoption of the agenda is presented.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Ms. Kundev, can we, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Katzenberger?
Aye.
Mrs. Shaughnessy?
Aye.
Mrs. Clark Sutton?
Aye.
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we, can I have a motion to, for the approval of the minutes?
Some vote.
Do we have?
Oh, do we have them? Sorry. Moving right along to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, President Katzenberger, Vice President Shaughnessy, distinguished board members, Assistant Treasurer, Ms. Kundev. Good to see you. It is my pleasure to introduce, again this year, our athletic director, Mr. Rob Sloan.
Thank you Superintendent Nedzwicki, Assistant Treasurer Emily Kundev, President Katzenberger, Vice President Shaughnessy, and distinguished board members. I've been invited here to recognize the efforts of some of our amazing student athletes and the coaches that helped them achieve their goals this year. The Lakewood track programs, both boys and girls, continue to grow exponentially. During a time where many programs see their numbers declining, the culture of our track programs continue to attract athletes and provide them with an opportunity to grow as athletes and people. It's a testament to Coach Tool and her staff, and I could not be more proud to be associated with this group of individuals. Before I bring up Coach Tool, I'd like to say just a couple of things about Sharion and her grit. If you know anything about track athletes, a lot of times, they're multifaceted. They're not just really good at one event, they're good at several events. But they're typically really, really good at one event. So, Sharion's really, really good event is the 100-meter hurdles. So, going into the district, she won the district championship, and she finished with a second, the second fastest time in the state of Ohio in the 100-meter hurdles, getting ready for regionals. So, her mindset was, I'm going to win a state championship in the 100-meter hurdles. So, we go to the regionals at Port Clinton, and they use a new starting system this year, which is a beep instead of a gun, which is typically what they use. And the 100-meter hurdles is basically the second race that goes off. The first one is a distance race where they're not all geared up, you know, they're just sort of standing up, ready to run. But in her race, it's a sprint, so she's in the starting blocks, and the beep hasn't started, but the little girl next to her twitches a little bit, and Sharion jumps and gets disqualified. So, at that time, her hopes for a Division One state championship in the 100-meter hurdles has vanished. So, being Sharion, she put her head down, maybe cried a little bit for about two or three minutes, and then gathered herself, and an hour later broke the school record in the 300-meter hurdles and qualified for the 300-meter hurdles and the long jump in the state tournament this year. So, just to say something a little bit about her grit. So, with that being said, I'd like to bring up Coach Steph Tool, who was the CWC Coach of the Year this year as well.
Thank you for inviting us again. It's always an honor. We appreciate everybody who takes the time to bring these athletes up. I didn't realize how emotional I'd feel when Robert told that story. But, um, I'd like to take a, um, but, you know, the conference title that our girls won, you know, and you get to be Coach of the Year, yada, yada, but, you know, there's, I always forget, 14 events in track in, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, you can't win a conference title with one coach, you know? There's five of us that work tirelessly, and through all the disciplines, the throws, the jumps, the distance, and the sprints and hurdles, you know, we scored in every single event at conference. And, you know, we laid things out, we knew it would be close. We've been chasing River and Bay and Westlake, and one, year by year, we're passing one up. But, you know, River, they just have such an established track program, so well coached, so much respect for them. So, we just knew, you know, it could go swing one way or another, right? And so, everybody who had a setback, and we had one, you know, a hurdler, it happened to be a Doxley, and her sister just completely face planted over the last hurdle. And she was going to finish, I don't know, third or fourth, and anyway, so you swing up six, you swing down, and, but then our little freshman throwers came through. But the point is that you don't, you can't do this or achieve this, just, it wasn't even remotely me. I just put it together, surrounding myself with amazing people who love track, love working with young adults, and love what they do. So, Austin and Adam and Gina and Rachel, really, they're the ones who, it should be Coaches of the Year, because track, you cannot do it with one, it takes so many. So, I'm super grateful. It was a lot of fun, the girls had a lot of fun, and it was neat, because even the boys team really celebrated with us, because, you know, we compete together each on those nights, so. So, that was a big honor, so thank you for the recognition, I appreciate it. But we're here to celebrate Sharion, and she's had an illustrious, wonderful, four-year career. But as people know, it wasn't like she was this sparky little freshman. Like, she always had talent, right, and everyone thinks, oh, you know, I've often talked with this with La Gina, you know, they, oh, you have a talented mom and dad, athletic, but you know what? You gotta have hard work too, right? I mean, you have good genetics, but beyond all that, without hard work and the ability to come back after setbacks, you can't get to where she got and achieve what she got. And, you know, there'd been a prelude, sophomore year, finals in the 100-meter hurdles. She clipped the last hurdle, went down, took like 11th and didn't make it to regionals, right? And she was like, definitely ranked top four. 300 hurdles that same day, couple, you know, an hour later, she clipped like that fifth hurdle, and that one day had to peel her off the track, right? And that was another regional berth missed, so, you know, she didn't make the four-by-two when we went to Nationals that year. She was devastated, right, but there were four girls ahead of her. But she just stuck her head down, stayed focused, trusted that her time would come. You know, and we had lots of tears behind the scenes, like, I want to try this, I want to do that. We need you here, we need you here, you know? When you, when you coach a team, you don't get to just do whatever you want. Like, sometimes you gotta run this, or you gotta run that, because we need points here or there, because ultimately, we're trying to represent Lakewood with the best product, right? And Sharion always bought in. So, I think she leaves behind that, that, spreading that to the other girls' understanding. You know, we need you, you got, run where we need you, jump where we need you, just trust us, right? And she did. So, she had had the goal all along to break the 300 hurdles, right? That was like the last three years, her thing. And then she was really breaking through this year of 60 and feeling that speed, and then she just really clipped with that 100, right? And then she was like, I can break that record. Like, we, we knew that was a, that was a 47-year-old record, right? 47 years that, that 100, that record stood. And that girl was an amazing athlete for Lakewood. So, you know, so then, you know, let's go for that, right? So, we did some hundreds and did some, you know, things like that. And so, when she had that, that devastating, oh, we just stood there, and I was like, oh, you know? And they're so unforgiving, it's like, sorry, dream's over, you're out, let's start the race, right? There was no, you know, charging the field like they used to, and then, you know, they're not sophisticated enough to jump, to throw other kids off. That's just not what high school kids do, maybe at the pro level, right? But, so anyway, so, you know, and, oh, I'm peeping, the crowd gasped, and coaches who'd been watching her were like, oh my gosh, you know, this, so. Went to the tent, had her time. After about 15 minutes, like, all right, you gotta get your crap together, like, because you, you, this isn't, you're not done, like, you're gifted. You came here in three events, so let's not waste these opportunities. Because she had shifted, loving that, those hundreds, like, she was going for a state title. I was like, let's just, you know, you tried, you've been chasing this daggone 300s, just go for it, the weather's perfect, you know? Just, just go do what you do, right? And doggone it, she did it, and that was, I mean, you have, I mean to tell you, that was probably the, probably in 35 years of coaching, one of the, that is probably the most devastating everything I had to witness personally as a kid, coach a kid, just lose a dream, like, right there. Bye-bye. I've never had a kid, like, in final that big, right? Dual meets, even then, I don't even know why they DQ him in a dual meet, because it's a dual meet. But, anyway, that's a whole nother conversation. But, and that whole starter thing, right? So, because you use the regular pistol the whole year, but all of a sudden, they don't tell us. And, you know, we're not whining about it, but the reality is, it's very odd when you just hear, and it's not even like at the Olympic level where they have tons of speakers, and they probably have a $50,000, this is like a $1,500 little, eh, you know? So, it, but it shook a lot of kids, and they really had to pay attention, you know, and, and be guarded with that. We did watch, oh, top-rated four girls, four-by-one, get DQ'd right in front of us, not that much later. It's just, wow, I'm just thinking at the state level, like, geez, just charge the field and then go from there, right? But, anyway. But she did those 300 hurdles, and then, then she came back and just, she didn't jump a very good first long jump, but it's just like, she wanted to, I was like, mm-mm, this is four years, you, you don't have time to cry. You don't, you gotta do this. This is not for me, not for Lakewood, this is what you've been working on, right? And so, she went back and breathed and trusted what we'd been telling her to do, and, you know, pull your hips forward, yada, yada, and PR, 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 like, her next three, two jumps, made the finals, and then it would, it took 18 feet, more than, she jumped 18 feet, one and a quarter, which was another PR, her last three were all PRs in those, in the finals. But the first five girls jumped over 18 feet. So, she, she took fours as 18 feet, one and a quarter, and made it to the state meet. So, tragedy with the 100, then she made the state in two other events, was just, was spectacular. So, went down there, and she had a great run at it, and ran a really good 300 hurdles, and, and jumped really well in the long jump, and even there, it was so competitive. And, you know, Sharion never makes anything easy, you know? Jump in, and everything's electronic, so we could literally see on her phones, okay, she's in third, and then she's seventh, and now yada, moving, right? Just like, you just, every time she jumped, someone else jumped further, and, you know? But then in the end, she made that podium and was all, all-state for the long jump, which she didn't, I don't know if she even jumped once or twice last year, right? Because there were two other girls jumping, Cadence and, and someone else, and Sharion was focusing on a few other events, right? So, so here, she virtually takes a year off long jump, and it wasn't even an event going into that indoor she was considering, you know? That was like, just, just get back to long jump, right? You can't run four races, but you're too talented not to do four things, right? So, anyway, it was a great run at state, and I forget what you were in, in the 300 lows, overall. 13th, yeah, yeah, real good, but that, even that record she broke, she destroyed it again, then on that Friday night at regionals, way down by more than a second. And that stood, I forget how long that record was, it was a long time. So, anyway, so she walks away with both of those hurdle records after all, and we traveled to Nationals and went to Philadelphia, and that was a great experience. And she was like 72nd, she ran great, it was, but she was just soaked in it, and like, paying attention to the times. And, you know, I think the first eight girls, her school record is 14-1-5, right? And that, you know, heading into the state meet, that was the second fastest time in the state of Ohio. Every single girl that finished, and this is the nation, mind you, they were like 13-6-5 and quicker, like, the top eight girls, it was, but it was, but she so appreciated their talent, that it wasn't like, no, it was like, wow, like, this is so awesome. And then she was, she knew, like, famous people who ran here. It was a really neat experience, and we brought a freshman too, Ivory, I always pronounce her, Gunka Wotin? Yep, yep. She qualified as a freshman in the discus and did phenomenal, it was so exciting. That's such a, she's thrown well over 100 feet, so she's going to chase that record next year, it's, I think, 117. But she, she had a great experience, it was great, her dad, and Coach Rachel was thrilled, so. But anyway, Sharion, what else do we want to say about you? She has a full ride to Xavier University in New Orleans. Between her academics and her track career, she has, she has a full ride, so we're excited. It's gonna be far away, but nice and hot. And she's going to be a multi-athlete, so they'll have her in the pentathlon, the pentathlon, because she can, she's well-rounded. So, come on up, Shar, and then I, she got this wonderful recognition from Nikki Antonio, right, from the state of Ohio, a citation recognizing your athletic achievements and state qualification for track. So, Mr. Sloan wanted me to give you that. So, anyway, it's never goodbyes, just see you later, and, you know, it's been a joy to coach her and, and just see you grow, because you trusted and worked hard, worked really hard, so, thank you.
We also have a certificate from the board as well for you, and I have to say, I did have my own Sharion Doxley experience. The one day, you know, we get to go to a lot of things, and the one day, we were at the West Shore Career Tech Passport Ceremony, where you were the Student of the Year and gave a beautiful speech. And then, a few hours later, there was a Legal Women Voters Scholarship Event, where she graciously accepted a scholarship, and then that was the day that you guys went on to win the conference championship. I'm like, it's Sharion Doxley Day in Lakewood, Ohio, and just graciously, just, you know, showed up for everything and did a wonderful job, so, you've just been an asset to Lakewood your whole time, so congratulations. I think we want to have some, and I think this is a family event, so come on up, everybody. It was one day, I was like, oh my gosh, does everyone realize this is all happening in one day? It was amazing. What's that? Yes, absolutely.
Okay, next up, I'd like to read a couple of statistics regarding our baseball team. These were compiled by Lakewood's number-one fan, Dr. Charles Greenoff. One of his bullet points said, "This historic season, the Rangers reached the Elite Eight, winning the district title for the first time since 1993, and were regional, or regional finalists for the first time since 1989." "They were 42 and 12 over the last two seasons, the highest winning percentage over two seasons in the past 50 years." "The Rangers were 4-0 against the rugged Southwest Conference, and had signature wins over Avon Lake, Avon, the school on Detroit, and North Canton Hoover. "The Lakewood Rangers have been playing baseball for over 100 years. Only one other team in 1949 went further in the state tournament than this team did. "Every great program has someone steering the ship, and our Rangers have had the pleasure of playing for an alumni, a great coach, and a great human being, head coach Grant Graves."
Thank you for having us tonight. It's great to be back this year. I think this time last year, we came and spoke with all of you and honored our, our team winning the GLC East Championship. And, and I think somewhere in, in my long-drawn-out speech, we talked about coming back in 2025. So, it's great to be back, and thank you all for having us, and congrats to Sharion and Coach Tool. And I just love the last four years, watching Sharion still working out there late into the spring season. Especially this year, we were kind of practicing late in May at the same time, and watching her just pull those hurdles out by herself, and, you know, knowing how much motivation that much taken, hard work, and so, congratulations to you and to the team. And we're going to miss seeing you out there that late in May and getting ready to do some great things. So, congrats, and best of luck next year. And just to speak about our team a little bit, like, like Coach Sloan said, and Dr. G., you know, historically puts together, you know, this was a historic season for a number of reasons. And I think, you know, more than anything, just such an enjoyable ride. You know, I've been a part of Lakewood baseball for a long time. It's, it takes sometimes a year like this to kind of put it all in perspective. But as a player, as an admirer, when I was going through the Lakewood City Schools District and saying, man, I can't wait to play for the high school team, and being an assistant coach and now being the head coach, it's been quite a ride to get to this point. And to be able to coach a group of guys like this usually only happens once in a coaching career or so. And just to take that all in and be here in front of you again this year is incredibly rewarding experience. I can't thank these guys enough for how much hard work they've put into this. You know, to get to the Elite Eight is an incredible accomplishment, but I, I think to do it the way that these players have done it, to handle the adversity that they did, to have the year that they did, to beat our rival, to play well within our conference, it, it takes a lot to do that. Baseball is a very funny and, and difficult sport. A lot can happen within the, just the, you know, small details of the game. So, for us to be, excuse me, 23 and 8, you know, play the most baseball games ever in the history of Lakewood High School, 31 games, to be together for that long of a season was just so rewarding. Thank you to all of you for your support. We went on our first-ever out-of-state trip as a team. We went to South Carolina, Myrtle Beach. That trip, I, I really credit it with helping us come together as a team, spend that time together, get closer. And you can see when we came back, you know, we, we go on a pretty good little run there. We beat St. Ed's, beat Buckeye, who was one of our main rivals in the conference, and it really just kind of propelled us. So, that time away, that, that faith that the school district shows in the team, it can't be overstated how much that meant to us, to just be able to go across state lines, only be with each other, and really just go down there. We were 3-1 in Myrtle Beach. We didn't get to go on the go-karts, we were going to go on the go-karts if we were 4-0, so that was regrettable. But, you know, we had just had a wonderful experience, and that was our only time that, you know, it was our first time across state lines and things like that. So, it was really rewarding to go. And, you know, just to have this group and watch them handle all these things, I think it's so, such an incredible poster board for the school, right? Because we, I've seen them grow up, I've seen them handle adversity, I've seen them achieve great things. You know, you talk about the vision of a Lakewood graduate, and it's, it's tough. I teach myself, and it's tough to see that in the classroom sometime, but to watch these guys navigate the outside world, whether it's on a trip or, you know, to go to the state playoffs and do what we were able to do, it takes a lot of those skills that we're trying to impart within these young men. So, it was awesome to see, we're so incredibly proud of our seniors, from the senior class. Logan and Peter are here with us tonight, our two seniors that were able to come here. One of our seniors just, just had knee surgery today from the season, so we're wishing him well. But the senior class is just awesome for a number of reasons. I think it paints an incredible mosaic of Lakewood High School. You know, we have students that are going to go on out of state. Pete's going to go to UConn next year and do incredible things in academics. We have, you know, players that are going to go on to the next level. Logan and Leo Sanasen are going to go play at Mountain Union next year. But we also have, you know, stu-, student athletes that are going to go into the FIRE Academy, become EMS, you know, paramedics are going to become physical therapists, you know? They said their experience working with Coach Popeo in the weight room, Coach Jimmy Gajewski, who we can't credit enough for our success this season. I mean, it's been an incredible investment in our student athletes, so a big thank you there. You know, but we're going to have our seniors go on and do so many wonderful things in their next chapter of their life. And baseball's a great, you know, way to kind of be a conduit to that. But to watch these guys go on and chase, you know, their next chapter, their next dreams has been incredibly rewarding. So, the Class 2025, you know, huge to our success, we wish them the best. Excited to watch Logan and Leo next year play, but this is the part of the speech where I pivot to next year, and I hope we can join you guys again in 2026, it's going to be a great year. We have a lot of our juniors here in attendance today, another wonderful senior class coming up, the Class of 2026. Drew Jones there, he just committed to play at Bowling Green next year, excuse me, in two years for them at the Division One level, so super excited for him on that. He was all-state this year, Cooper Russell, a junior, was all-state this year, they're here tonight. They were all-state for, baseball report for the, for the association. So, just a super exciting thing to have all these guys coming back and being able to watch them, you know, try to best the Class of 2025 and have that little rivalry. But the bar's been set high, and we, we hope to join you in a meeting in late July next year. So, thank you so much for having us tonight, we really appreciate it.
Congratulations, you guys. Coach, here's a certificate. I, I don't know if you guys knew, we missed you guys at the Spring Sports Banquet, but there were, Director Sloan was giving us regular score updates, and while we were, it was very exciting, it made the banquet even more exciting, so. Yes, and there's some, you guys, I can try and do this, or you guys can, why don't you guys, why don't we go over here and I can try and, I can try and hand these out? Wait, you guys can have them for the picture?
Yeah. I don't want to get off the wall. You want to stand right? Just alternate yourselves. Yeah, you can stand right. Yeah.
It's a remarkable turnout for the summer.
Yeah, for July.
So we appreciate it very much.
And that concludes the superintendent's report. Round of 26, 27, or 25, 26.
There you go. It's exciting stuff. Well, on that note, that's a really fun superintendent's report. At this point in the meeting, before we move on to the super fun business of the evening, anybody who would choose to spend the rest of the evening doing other things is welcome to excuse themselves. You're also welcome to stick around, but I understand, we understand if you want to move on. Congratulations, all of you again.
Thank you.
Okay. That's great. So we'll move on to discussion items for the monthly meeting, and we'll start with the finance report with Ms. Clark Sutton.
Thank you. Investments purchased and matured by, as of May 2025. Agenda materials identify investments that matured as well as outstanding investments as of May 2025. Investment earnings for regular board funds for the month of May totaled $189,227, bringing the year-to-date total to $2,912,063. Given the volatility of the market, that looks pretty good to me. For the month of May 2025, general fund receipts totaled $4,680,433, and general fund expenditures Once property taxes are collected, the county will disperse another chunk of money to us, and that will reverse. The summary of our revenues and expenditures. Our revenue, year-to-date actual and projected revenues through May show a positive $865,780 variance compared to the five-year forecast, and the noted variance is based on interest income exceeding 2025 estimates, contributing to the overall positive variance. Expenditures, year-to-date actual and projected expenditures through May show a negative $254,719 variance compared to the five-year forecast, and the noted variances are based on textbook adoptions are contributing to the negative variance, and that is most likely related to timing and should be resolved prior to the fiscal year end. Cash reserves and compliance items, our cash reserves are sufficient through fiscal year 2026, and a financial summary report has been provided to show the monthly and fiscal year-to-date cash position for the non-general funds maintained by the district. Appropriation modifications will ensure the district is in compliance with the State Auditor's Office and the County Fiscal Office. All accounts have sufficient funds available to cover the increase in the appropriations, and the amendment increases allow the district to legally encumber and pay funds up to the amounts appropriated. And that is a lot of words to say that we are in good financial shape right now.
Thank you. Moving on to the, we'll skip the building sites and major purchases and move on to, there's no report at this time, move on to the education report. Mrs. Dotman is not away this evening, so we'll rely on Mr. Callahan to fill in.
Thank you. We will step in here on behalf of Mrs. Dotman. There are 10 items, I do believe. First one here is Student Club, Class of 2029. The club will facilitate raising funds for the Class of 2029 Prom and other activities. And I should point out that these items are being, excuse me, read and discussed here at this first meeting of the month to be acted on, of course, at our second meeting of the month. Second item is a resolution to approve an extended field trip to Germany. Lakewood High School students will travel to Germany, will have the opportunity to broaden one's vision of our world community and offer the platform from which a learner can come to an enhanced understanding of the world that surrounds us. Students will experience expert-led tours in Berlin, Bronchway, Homestay, and Munich. The trip will take place June 18, 2026, through July 2, 2026. Next, we have an agreement between the Board of Education and Ace Taxi Service, Inc. Ace Taxi will provide transportation to and from school for students with disabilities that are eligible for transportation as determined by the Department of Student Services for the 25-26 school year. We also have an agreement between the Board and Personal Leasing Transportation. Similarly, Personal Leasing, as they have for some time, will provide transportation to and/or from school for students with disabilities that are eligible, again, as determined by the Department of Student Services for the 25-26 school year. Personal leasing has, again, provided for many years that service. We also have an agreement between the Board and Samia Transportation, Inc. Samia Transportation, Inc. will be an additional vendor to provide services to our students with disabilities for the 25-26 school year. And an agreement between the Board and Suburban School Transportation. They have previously been a vendor, will be providing transportation services to students in wheelchairs for the 25-26 school year. We also have a memorandum of understanding between the Lakewood Board of Education and Dr. Seth Garcia, Ph.D. Dr. Seth Garcia has agreed to provide mental health services to Medicaid-eligible students at no cost to the district for the 25-26 school year. We also have a community-based career technical agreement between the West Shore Career Technical Education District and Gordon Food Service. This one-year agreement will provide a community-based career technical experience for up to six West Shore students. These students will participate in vocational exploration, assessment, and training in a real-world environment. Students will be provided with training experiences designed to develop functional daily living skills, appropriate social behavior, and communication skills. Students are not paid for this work experience. A West Shore teacher will be assigned, along with an aide, to provide direct onsite supervision of all students. We also have a resolution to approve an agreement with Cisco Maraki. A Maraki enterprise agreement simplifies and strengthens the district's wireless network management while costing less than a standard year-to-year contract. It consolidates all access points under a single license with one renewal date, streamlining both budgeting and oversight. The agreement provides full access to advanced security and performance features, supports flexible growth across buildings, and enables centralized cloud-based management, boosting operational efficiency and ensuring reliable connectivity for students and staff. And finally, Lakewood Public Library Board of Trustees reappointment. The Lakewood Public Library Board of Trustees recommends the reappointment of Mr. Michael Artbauer as trustee of the Lakewood Public Library to a term that commences on September 12, 2025, expiring on September 12, 2032. And I do believe that concludes my report, if I'm not mistaken, or is there one other item? No, I do believe that concludes it.
Thank you. And thank you for the reminder to mention that all these agenda items are for being read at this meeting and will be voted on in the second regular monthly meeting. And now we will move on to policy, which is me. Resolution to adopt a policy of the Lakewood City Schools Board of Education. Pursuant to Policy 9140.01, the superintendent has established a Board Policy Review Committee who has reviewed all suggested revisions contained in this report. In addition, these revisions have also been reviewed by the Superintendent, Treasurer, Cabinet Members, and the NEOLA Consultant. And that concludes the policy report, and we will move on to Human Resources with Mrs. Shaughnessy.
Thank you. We have six items that we'll be voting on. The first are Certified Appointments, Special Compensations, and Salary and Pay Rate Adjustments, total of 98 actions, a total of 57 Classified Appointments, Special Compensation, and Salary and Pay Rate Adjustments, and 45 Community Recreation and Education Actions for Aquatics, Athletics, and Programs. The next item is a resolution to approve an addenda to the Master Service Agreement between the Lakewood Board of Education and Rachel Wixey and Associates Dedicated School Staffing. That's the organization that we contract with and have for a number of years for substitutes. The next is kind of exciting. It's a resolution to approve Lakewood Community Baseball Softball Association Name Change. Lakewood Community Baseball Association, called LCBA, wishes to enter a memorandum of understanding to allow the organization name change to Lakewood Baseball Softball Association to fall under the umbrella of the Lakewood Board of Education. The Lakewood Board has been working directly with LCBA Board President Julia Toke, who represents the current LCBA Board of Directors. This agreement allows the Recreation Department greater oversight and alignment of the overall baseball and softball operations of LCBSA, such as registration, scheduling, permitting, field maintenance requests, payments, et cetera. They'll also benefit from structured oversight as well as the financial benefit of not being obliged to pay for permitted space. As we continue to align our offerings through the Recreation Department with the Athletic Department, we've worked hard to support our in-house travel and interscholastic baseball programs. Adding our softball partnership will increase the alignment of all of our baseball, softball programming, K through 12. And I know this is something we've been working on for years, and we've gotten excellent support from our athletic director and high school coaches, I know. The next item will be a resolution to approve the appointment to the Lakewood Rec and Education Commission. They have interviewed, the commission has interviewed and agreed on June 17, 2025, to ask the Lakewood Board of Education to appoint Mr. Christopher Ferrone as commissioner to the Lakewood Community Recreation and Education Commission, and he will be assuming the remaining time left on Mr. Tom Ziggman's term, which expires December 31, 2026. And I believe that concludes my report.
We will now move on to the communications portion of the evening. Do any of my colleagues have any comments they'd like to make? Just wanted to thank and congratulate everybody who participated in the Fourth of July Parade, all so many student organizations and sports teams and the rec department. It was a great showing, and it's always such a wonderful day for Lakewood. And I believe the Lakewood Project played for three hours at the Lakewood Park before the, I think the count was 40 songs, something like that. So it was a wonderful lead into the always wonderful fireworks. So it's just one of our favorite days for our city. And so it wouldn't be, couldn't happen without our teachers and coaches and students and parents and everybody who make the hospital. So thank you for everybody for everything you did. And just wanted to say that. Anybody else? Now, we have a couple of folks who wanted to make comments. And just a reminder that everybody has three minutes to make public comments, and after that, I'll ask you to, you know, have to cut it off. And to remind everybody, we don't engage in back-and-forth conversations, so you'll make your comment, and if there's any follow-up, we do that after the meeting. And so the first person who has a comment is Erin Kelly. And just state your name and the street of residence and that.
Hi, everyone.
One second, sure they're getting their technology up and running. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Erin Kelly, I live on Lake Road. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I've spoken to some of you starting back in March, but I'm going to take the opportunity to speak to as many people as I can in Lakewood about this issue that's very near and dear to my heart right now. Coming to you to ensure that this issue is part of the minutes going down into the school board, I do realize we have a follow-up meeting at the end of July, which I'm also looking forward to, to see what we can do here. But here's why I'm coming to you. So I come to you as a parent, not as a parent, but as a concerned member of Lakewood. I am a parent, a person that walks by the Horseman Playground every day, and I've had the opportunity over the last year to see children on that playground every day. And I am concerned, as a citizen of Lakewood, about the safety of the children with mobility issues on that playground. I come to you to ask, is that playground ADA compliant? I've asked for the audit that was done. I understand that there was one. I haven't received it yet, and I just put it in. I'm not saying we're flink went on that. But I am truly coming to you as a safety issue. This isn't related to the seven, I'm not going to the seven school issue. It really is about the status of today. And my question is, if it's not, why? The earliest data I can find that the CHAMP program has been in Horseman dates back to like something in 2017, I could find. I don't know how long it's been there since then. My question to you is, have we not remediated that playground because we don't want to touch the playground and then bring it up to code for ADA compliance? The CHAMP program does have children with mobility issues. ADA compliance requires accessible routes that allow children to access spaces, structures, get into the buildings, get into the locking keys on the structures themselves, ground-level play components, elevated play components. And I can go down to the levels of these. I mean, you can all read the code on this. I'm not a lawyer here. Accessible surfaces, accessible entrances. I encourage all of you to go behind Horseman. It's the hidden playground. All of you see the big playgrounds that are out there today in the other schools. They're big and beautiful, and everyone sees them. Look at the one out here. Horseman is not that, and it has the children that probably need it to be looking like that. What you'll find is locking keys, a chain with a padlock. Why it's there, on two entrances, I have no idea, but a child in a wheelchair couldn't get in there. The small path leads to nowhere. The children cannot get off a path if they're being pushed. They cannot play on any of the structures that exist. You get to go on a tiny path ride and back off. And hey, if you're lucky, you're probably going to fall over if someone is not tightly gripping you on that playground. So my ask to you is, when the budget comes out, please prioritize this ask relative to everything else. Our children matter, and it's the Lakewood Ranger vision. Belonging inclusion.
Thank you so much. Our next speaker is Monica Brua.
I'm Monica Brua. I live on Arthur Avenue. But I'm here today on behalf of another parent, Erin Kelly. I last met her at the city's council, community conversation last week, where she was pleading with council members to get involved because she's been unable to get help from the school board and administration. She mentioned her concern, which is the Horseman Playground. The equipment is old. It is not ADA accessible. It is broken. It really needs a makeover. I was there. I've taken pictures. I've taken measurements. Erin stated that she would love to meet, as she mentioned, I wrote all this. Erin stated that she would love to meet, as she mentioned, I wrote all this before she agreed to speak today, and looking into grants because there are a lot of opportunities working with the PTA and fundraising, but nothing has been done. Let's see. Sometime after Horseman was renovated in 2008, CHAMP's program moved there. The program includes children, students in wheelchairs, and other accessibility issues, and that was the time that the district should have updated all of these needs for those children. Play is a necessary part of education, and common sense says that they should, that we should work towards supporting every student that we have. So how many pieces of equipment are available for someone in a wheelchair? There are none. What can a student do in a wheelchair? As Ms. Kelly mentioned, they can go. It's 85 feet that they go down a path that is barely eight feet, or five feet wide, which is the ADA requirement. It's on an angle, so if you are close on that, you can fall down. And just for reference, 85 feet walks down this path, goes across the back room, and goes right to the cameras. That's not a lot of fun for a student. I don't think that is fun. Some ADA, we talked about the ADA guidelines, so the ground play, you have to have at least one type of ground play component. There is none at Horseman. The elevated play components need to have 50% of elevated play component, play components on the accessible route with fewer than 20 elevated components, and there are none at Horseman. So the district houts at every meeting, heard it today, visions of a Ranger. So let's apply it here. Where's the collaboration? Where's that team problem solving to work with the parent who's interested in helping and fundraising and getting this going? Where's the global awareness, awareness, engagement and opportunities to promote fair, equity and fairness? Where's the empathy, the awareness of others' challenges? Where's the critical thinking, generating ideas, and the possibilities and actions? The students at Horseman and the parents and residents of this district deserve more than just these words about a vision. They deserve action. So hopefully you'll be able to reach out and work with Erin about this. Thank you.
And I will move on to other board business. Mrs. Shaughnessy.
Thank you. These are two items that they've requested we approve on one reading, so we'll need to roll call. The first are two certified resignations and 11 certified appointments, and I move adoption as a resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Can we, Ms. Kundav, can you call it all?
Mrs. Katzenberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Shaughnessy.
Aye.
Mrs. Clark Sutton.
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun.
Aye.
Thank you. And the next item, there are two classified resignations. I'm requesting approval on one reading, and I move adoption of this resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And Ms. Kundav, can you call it all?
Ms. Katzenberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Shaughnessy.
Aye.
Mrs. Clark Sutton.
Aye.
Mr. Calhoun.
Aye.
Thank you. I did have a question. Ms. Kundav, I don't know if you were, or there was a, I know that there was some question about a statement about what was going on at the state level for Mr. Zeeman. I don't know.
I don't know if that was going to be read tonight or if we were going to wait for Mr. Zeeman.
I have a, I probably, yeah.
Okay. So did we want to do that tonight? And who?
It's long.
Okay.
It's very long.
It's okay.
We all, I think we all got it. He sent it out.
Yeah. And he wanted us to, I think we were supposed to...
We could read it tonight or at the next meeting.
Yeah, no, it's fine. Did you, I can go ahead and read it, or?
Yeah, I think we should go ahead and read it. I believe he thought it would be read during the conference. Okay, that we didn't. I think it's important to read because we also would like to talk the show.
Okay. So if it's financed, would you like to do it, Kelly, or would you rather I did?
Sure, whatever.
Okay.
Start at the...
That's the first.
Yeah. Okay. There is one. Okay. Just checking. Thank you.
I'm not tricking you.
Thanks, Betsy. Thank you, Mrs. Shaughnessy. So this is a review and analysis from our district treasurer about the state biennial budget and the results that, how they impact the Lakewood City Schools. So he says, "With the governor signing of the fiscal year 2026 and fiscal year 2027 biennial budget, I wanted to provide an update on the final results that impacted Lakewood City School District as well as the timeline. In February 2025, the governor submitted his budget proposal to the Ohio House of Representatives. The House of Representatives moved the process forward by submitting House Bill 96 as the bill for the biennial budget." Excuse me. "The House of Representatives deliberated and amended the governor's budget throughout March and April. The House passed the budget bill on April 9th, 2025. House Bill 96 then proceeded to the Senate chambers. The Senate debated and amended House Bill 96 throughout April, May, and June. The Senate passed their version of the House Bill 96 on June 11th. House Bill 96 then went to Conference Committee, which included three senators, two Republican and one Democrat, and three representatives, two Republican, one Democrat. The Conference Committee concurred with amendments on June 25th, 2025. House Bill 96 was sent to the governor for his consideration, and on June 30th, 2025, the governor signed his, signed HB 96 with 67 vetoes. There are multiple other provisions of the budget impacting public education. However, I limited the below analysis to only those items that will, would have or will impact the Lakewood City School District." Excuse me. "The governor's budget, completion of the phase-in of the new school foundation formula, also known as the Fair School Funding Plan, or FSFP, first enacted in fiscal year 2022 to include the final two years of the planned six-year phase-in. That had been in doubt in February. Increase of the minimum state share of transportation funding to 45.83%, 45.83% in fiscal year '26, 50% in fiscal year '27. No updates were made on the input data used to compute the per pupil base cost in each district. This data was updated in the '24-'25 budget and is currently based on the outdated data from fiscal year '22. The property value and income data that is used to calculate the state share of the foundation formula was updated in both fiscal year '26 and fiscal year '27. The combination of the updating of the data used in the state-local share calculation and the failure to update the base cost inputs, inputs data led to a significant decrease in the state share for over 80% of Ohio school districts in the next biennium. There's also a reduction in transitional aid guarantee, transportation guarantee, and the formula transition supplement for all districts on these guarantees of 5% in fiscal year '26 and 10% in fiscal year '27. The statewide average share of the base cost would decline as follows under the fiscal year '26-'27 executive budget. Fiscal year '25, a decrease of 34, 38.4% in fiscal year '26, 35%, and in fiscal year '27, 32.2%. By comparison, from fiscal year 1999 through fiscal year 2024, the statewide average state share of the base cost has never been below 40%. In fiscal year '19, it was 46.3%, and in fiscal year 2024, the last time the base cost inputs were fully up-to-date, the state average base cost was 43.3%. So I'd like to just go back and review the declines. So fiscal year '25, it would be down from 43% to 38.4%. In fiscal year '26, it will drop to 35%, and in fiscal year '27, it will drop to 32.2%. This financial impact to the Lakewood City School District is a potential loss in revenue of $5.7 million in state funding over that forecasted period. House of Representatives' proposal, also what we've been referring to as HB 96. In fiscal year '26 and '27, funding for each school district begins with each district's fiscal year '25 foundation formula funding minus the amount of supplemental targeted assistance that they receive. The funding formula is run for '26 and '27 as specified in the executive version of the budget with the exception that supplemental targeted assistance is eliminated. An additional temporary foundation funding amount is provided on top of the baseline funding. Thus, while the executive budget's reductions in the guarantee are retained in the House budget, the impact is muted because districts will not receive less funding than in 2025 under the House budget. Fiscal year '25 guarantee amount is provided with guarantees that a district's temporary foundation funding does not fall. The House School Funding Formula also provides a base funding supplement of $20 per pupil in fiscal year '26 and $30 per pupil in fiscal year '27. The count of pupils for this calculation is based on each district's enrolled average ADM, average daily...
Members.
Members. Okay. I was thinking, I was thinking, thank you. Enrollment, excuse me, enrollment growth supplement is provided for districts whose enrollment grew by at least 3% from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '25 for the '26 school year, and from '23 to '26 for the '27 school year. And it's a 3% increase across the, like, of the whole district, K-12. The House budget included a provision which would direct county budget commissioners to reduce property tax millage rates by the amount necessary to reduce school property taxes by the dollar amount equal to the excess of district's cash balance beyond a maximum of 30% of operating expenditures. The financial impact to Lakewood City Schools is that a flat formula state funding, potential loss of $14 million over the forecast period due to cash balance threshold limitations. The Senate proposal eliminates the governor's proposed reductions in the guarantee, instead continuing guaranteeing in fiscal year '26 and fiscal '27 at fiscal year '21 funding amounts consistent with implementation of the F, of the Fair School Funding Program. Continuation of the House Enrollment Growth Supplement in a slightly modified form. Implementation of a performance supplement for districts that meet specified criteria on the school district report card overall performance rating. By facilitating a transition from using the current method of identifying economically disadvantaged students with the direct certification method of identifying low-income students, and it increased the cash balance cap to 50% of operating expenditures. The financial impact to Lakewood City School District is that there was a potential increase in state funding of $1.6 million over the forecast period due to the performance supplement. And we continue, he's walking us through the different seasons. Then we had Conference Committee in June. The Conference Committee version of the budget largely followed the state Senate's proposed funding formula. The two main differences are as follows. Cut the performance supplement in half to $53.9 million each year and move it outside of the foundation formula as an additional funding item, similar to preschool, special education, and special education transportation. And restore the House proposed base funding, base funding supplement, increasing the per pupil amounts from $20 to $27 in fiscal year '26, and from $30 to $40 in fiscal year '27. Conference Committee version of the budget slipped the difference by imposing a 40% cash balance cap. The Conference Committee version also provided for a sliding scale to reduce the impact of the cap for districts whose cash balances are below $10 million. The financial impact to the Lakewood City Schools. There is a potential increase in state funding of $800,000 over the forecast period due to the performance supplement. There is also a potential loss of $12 million over the forecast period due to the cash balance threshold limitations. Then the governor's vetoes that impacted the Lakewood City Schools financially. He vetoed, Governor Dwyane vetoed the 40% cash balance threshold limitation component. This means that the potential increase in state funding of $800,000 over the forecast period due to the performance supplement, supplement is likely to happen for the Lakewood City Schools. Again, he wants to reiterate that there are multiple other provisions of the budget impacting public education. However, I have limited the above analysis to only those items that have or will impact Lakewood City School District. Other items of note. Other educational items vetoed by the governor. A provision that would have prohibited school districts from paying for the employee share of STRS or SERS contributions for superintendents, treasurers, and principals. He vetoed a provision that would have included emergency levy, emergency levy, substitute levies, incremental growth levies, conversion levies, and combined school district income tax and property tax levies into the calculation of the 20 mil floor. Side note, in Lakewood, we rarely use any of those levy, those particular levies, so that doesn't make a big difference for us. He also vetoed a provision that would have required school board candidates to have a political affiliation on the ballot for elections. He vetoed a provision that would have allowed county budget commissions to reduce property taxes on non-debt levies. And he vetoed a provision that would have created an education savings account program for non-chartered, non-public schools. Included in the final budget bill, modified the reporting requirements regarding the five-year forecast. Reduced the forecast time period from five years to four years, and changed the reporting deadline to August 31st and the last day of February. Current law is November 30th and May 31st. And the treasurer's office always does a great job of having all the material updated every month, so they want to change their due date, that's fine. Moving forward, with the final budget now set, the district can focus on future operating needs. As has been discussed throughout the last two years, the district will most likely be seeking additional funding from the community in the form of an operating levy request in May 2026. Hmm, that's soon. The current budget will allow the district to seek a traditional levy request. Had the provisions discussed above been included in the biennial budget, the district would have needed to be more creative and strategic in its approach. I appreciate the governor's commitment to public education by his vetoing many provisions that have decimated public education in Ohio. However, advocacy will need to continue with vigilance to ensure that all children of the Lakewood community and the great state of Ohio are provided the opportunities of a thorough, efficient, and adequately funded public education. As the governor stated in his press conference, "The future of Ohio is in our children, and it is all of our responsibilities to ensure that they are provided the opportunities to achieve and grow to be productive citizens of the great state of Ohio."
And disadvantaged pupil impact aid is DPIA.
Thank you. And I appreciate that. And that concludes Mr. Zeeman's letter to all of us.
And that's going to be published?
Yes.
Good, because it's hard to take it all in. I think also we have to pay attention to the whole inside millage thing was not addressed, House Bill 335, I think. And that's a huge impact on our city and the schools if they abolish or even decrease inside mills. So there were some interesting stories in The Observer from people talking about that.
But they didn't make a change this time.
It's a separate piece of legislation that's in committee. I think they're not going to come back till September. But keep your pens handy, or your fingers on the phone.
To Mr. Zeeman's point, I think that a lot of things kind of moved in and out of the budget, and while we're very happy that some of the things were vetoed, taken out of the budget or vetoed, it's something to very much keep an eye on because I think some of these things aren't going away. And we, as we've seen in the past, sometimes bills can be introduced or things can be slipped into existing bills and literally in the middle of the night, so that...
That's happened.
It's literally like two o'clock in the morning of an existing bill right before it's voted on. So public pressure, I think, and phone calls and everything, I think, had an impact at this time and will continue to have an impact if everybody participates, so keep doing it.
I, I think that the real, a real danger is that the income tax cut is going to cost the state about a billion dollars. And so that means that that's, makes money not available to school, to public schools. So I think that, you know, you don't think of them necessarily in the same way, but if you cut down your available funds, then you're not going to have the money to support the guarantee, anything, so.
Does anybody else have any comments? Okay. Do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And the meeting is adjourned.